Adjacent to the Anuvik Alawat settlement area, home of the Gwich'un, the Anuvik Alawat. Other indigenous people and people from throughout Canada and throughout the world. And all that makes Anuvik a great place to work and live. This is the video, the holdings where you don't have any emotions, but we'll be going through the agenda. And we'll have some presentations and we've got some eager presenters waiting online here, so we'll get to them soon. Item number two, adoption of the agenda, anything additional we will need? To adopt, we will be having some additional items for Wednesday after the public hearing and perhaps one other. A few local council for development permit, so. Uh, there will be a couple of additions um for Wednesday's council meeting. Declaration of conflict of interest or pecuniary interest with any of the agenda items. A non-declared delegations, presentations or petitions. We do have the RCMP report, but I don't see Staff Sergeant, why not here yet? So. We'll give him a few minutes and we'll bump down.
He's gonna be here on Wednesday.
Oh, he's gonna be here on Wednesday, sorry. That's right too. Okay. So uh, we'll bump down to the Anuvik Alawat Energy Security Project and I see. Travis, you're with us there. Do you wanna introduce your other teammates?
Yeah, thanks Mayor Clarkson. Can you hear me okay?
Very good.
Right on. Yeah, good, good to see you Peter and Council. Um, yeah, the other team members here, so Travis Plasky, for those that don't know me. I know, I think I know most of Council though. Uh, I lead the Anuvik Alawat Energy Security Project for IRC. And I have three team members on, they obviously key in what we're proposing to do. Uh, so I have Keith Nutting, he's a project advisor uh with IESP. Terrence Dumont, uh who's kind of our operations leader. And Alan McDonald, who I'm sure you've met over the years, uh Director of Regulatory and HSE, so. Um, I'll lead the presentation though. Uh, I know, I saw you guys flipping the slides when I got online, so you're probably familiar with uh. What we're gonna talk about, but I'll um, I'll share these if I'm able and. We'll go through this and uh what it is we want to talk about with IESP. Is that showing up okay?
Yep, looks good.
Right on. So I just wanted to, because we're here tonight and it's been um, it's been several months since I spoke to um the town. About where the project's at, I thought I'd give a really quick update in a couple of slides and then. I did wanna discuss uh something that we're considering uh and trying to put together kind of as a business proposal. Uh, within IPC or the Petroleum Corporation, but also working through the regulatory process with the local regulators and the Canada Energy Regulators. So that's really what I wanted to focus on talking about tonight. And in an ideal world, um after questions, we'd uh, we'd be hopefully looking to get some. Uh, some form of letter of support from the uh, from the Town of Anuvik would be ideal. So just quickly on uh the project and where we're at, so this is the latest rendering. Uh, of what the facility is gonna look like on site. Uh, I think most people locally are getting somewhat familiar with where this is. And the various infrastructure, but we're kilometer hundred and twenty-eight on the ITH towards Tuck. Um, we have the four kilometer access road into the site, there's a bridge about midway down the road. And right now we have two pads on site, so we have what we call the energy pad, which is what we're showing here. Uh, which is where the main facility will sit. And then just to the south of this is actually the well pad, and I have a different drawing later in the presentation. But the well pad is actually where the M eighteen well sits, and that's actually the sump cap as well. Um, the sump is, we all know what sumps are from the original drilling programs, but. Uh, that's the sump that we covered and encapsulated a number of years ago. Um, the facility right now, looking at this image, I would say we're probably around forty to fifty percent of this equipment is. In fabrication or completed at this point. Uh, a lot of the effort right now is gonna be on kind of this bottom part of the facility, this is the synthetic diesel. Part portion of the facility and a lot of engineering and effort is going into this right now. Most of the other infrastructure has had a fair bit of engineering or fabrication complete. And we're looking to get the synthetic diesel kind of caught up and fabricated now. Um, we do have a barge on its way north right now. Um, I know that the weather has been. Not ideal in the Arctic and even around the bearing, so we have been a little bit delayed, but we are trying to land. Our first barge here, the third week of September into Tuktiak Tuk, which will bring. Some minor pieces of this equipment, uh but mostly a lot of the foundation work, so the piles are on that barge. Uh, some of the power generation equipment that sits up here. Um, as well as some of the storage, storage tanks. And we actually were able to get some storage tanks on there for Anuvik Gas Limited. Uh, which worked out with the situation they're facing and what we're gonna talk about more here in a minute. Couple more pictures, this is a little bit of the history of the project. Uh, it's been going on for a long time uh that we all know, it went through a long regulatory phase of four years. Uh, but we've been now into kind of a lot more of the heavy construction here in the last two years, so. Civil works are mostly complete now, we have a little bit more civil works that we have to do this uh winter. With a bit more of a gravel haul uh to level out some of the pad infrastructure and then we're hoping. That late winter will get into the beginning of our piling program. Uh, which will be great because we'll continue to increase that uh local construction and jobs. That we've seen so far because we estimate right now about thirty-seven million in local construction contracts already. And uh, over seventy, I guess, local Anuvik Alawat and Gwich'un have been employed on the project, which is great to see. Here's some pictures of the various modules that are being built. We, the top right picture, this is uh, this is actually an image of. Some transshipment we had to do of equipment coming from overseas on, going onto the barge, which is heading north right now. The other, oh, sorry, in the picture in the bottom left, this is also equipment that's on the barge destined north right now. Um, the other four pictures here are some of the large modules that are being constructed on the West Coast, those are not. Coming up this winter, they will be coming up next summer, so uh, but this just should give the perspective of the type of equipment that's being built. Maybe I'll stop there if there's any early questions on the main project before I talk about uh. The short-term project.
Travis, are the main project still uh operational late twenty twenty-six?
Um, Mayor Clarkson, I think we're, we're definitely behind. Um, we haven't seen as much progress as we would have liked on major equipment. Um, the gas plant. So the, the, uh, if I break the facility into kind of its components, the gas plant being where we produce the compressed natural gas, which is. Mostly used in Anuvik, I would say that's still on a good schedule for late twenty twenty-six. The, the synthetic diesel part of the plant though is behind right now, so that looks like deliver in, delivery in twenty twenty-seven right now. Um, the balance of plant is the third component, I would say, we, we have, do have a lot of the major equipment, but we do have some engineering to finish on the balance of plant, so. Right now it, it does seem like we're dragging into twenty twenty-seven. And that leads me right into the situation that Anuvik's facing with Anuvik Gas and. Where we're at as a project and what we're thinking of proposing to do for the next two years. To kind of support, well, the reason that we want this project for energy security, but trying to support some of the, the realities we're facing here shorter term.
Okay, Councilor Merrill, you got a question?
It, it could just explain what synthetic diesel versus diesel?
We, we use the term synthetic diesel, so when you, you put it in an engine uh or, or even a heater. Or a furnace, it's gonna burn exactly the same, it does the exact same properties as um Arctic grade diesel. The only difference is typical diesel is coming from a refining process from oil. We're actually fabricating the diesel by breaking apart. Like we're, it's coming from gas, really, we're, we're breaking apart hydrocarbons that aren't usable in the region. And then we recombine them and then we turn them into a diesel, so. We're kind of using bit more chemistry fundamentals to actually fabricate the diesel, and that's why it's called synthetic, but in the end it's. The exact same hydrocarbon makeup, the only difference is I would say is diesel has obviously a dislike, it, it's colored. Uh, versus synthetic diesel actually looks like water, it doesn't have the impurities that you're gonna see. With their traditional diesel, like around the sulfur and stuff. Um, so it's a manufactured diesel is another way to say this, and the reason being. Is when you look at the M eighteen well, we have a lot of associated liquids with the gas. We don't just have a dry gas stream, so something we really tried to focus on doing was, we didn't want to start up M eighteen. Produce a little bit of natural gas and that have a whole, have a whole bunch of value leak outside of the region by trucking away these liquids we couldn't use. So the concept has been to turn those liquids into a usable product within the region, and that's why we looked at. I should just call it diesel, it'll be easier for everybody, but synthetic diesel is the technical term. But it behaves exactly the same as regular diesel.
Okay, and one last question before we move on. Does the natural gas coming out meet the specs that the power? Or, or the power corporation can use for their natural gas generators in Anuvik?
There's been a fair bit of work done on this, I would say. I would say initial indication is yes. Um, there's gonna have to be a little bit of tuning done to the engines because they're used to a very high. I guess methane content, nature, natural gas, and we have a little bit more ethane and other constituents in our natural gas, so. With a little bit of tuning or derating of the engines. We should be able to get into the power corp, but we're still working on that right now with them.
Okay, thanks.
So this, this is, the way I would look at this is. It's kind of a mini sped up version of the project. Um, the project. Is obviously this larger facility that's very integrated, that's trying to make two products, and it's very well balanced in that. We don't have a lot of inefficiencies in it. But what we're looking to do is start up a mini version of the IESP. And we're very fortunate in the last few years that there's been some businesses. Particularly in the US that have gotten really good at processing gas in a mobile fashion. Um, and we actually wanna produce compressed natural gas to help Anuvik Gas in the short term. And compressed natural gas, for anybody that doesn't know, basically we take the natural gas, we clean it up. And then we compress it into obviously a high pressure, that's for transport, so it gets moved down the road at a high pressure. And then when it gets to the Town of Anuvik, we'll depressurize it and put it into the utilador. And the reason we're doing this is Iqal, it's, it's been in the news a little bit this summer, we've all seen. Iqal is facing a very uncertain future now, I, I guess it's always been on. Maybe borrowed time would be a term that some would use, uh but now we're seeing it could be near the end of its life. I can't speak for them, but we all know it, it could be in its last days, very possibly. So they've, they've really committed to bringing up a lot of propane and, and adding to the propane air system in the short term. Uh, to really deal with the imminent crisis that's being faced, but that comes at a, at a cost. And with M eighteen being right there, right there, we wanna figure out a way that we can get gas online sooner. And we can kind of displace continuing to bring up southern fuels. And actually displace trying to expand the propane system, so. Anuvik Gas, they're gonna have to make decisions, we're not able to do something before November, so they're gonna have to. Deal with the fact that we have a road outage coming very soon, they're gonna add the storage, we're, we're carrying up some of that equipment for them right now on the barge. And they'll have added propane storage, but we are looking to get something running. In the middle of the winter such that we can deal with future road outages and have a local supply, supply of compressed natural gas. We are looking at a design that can meet Anuvik Gas's peak uh demand. So we'll be able to supply Anuvik Gas throughout the year and meet all of their different load demands, which is great. And we're really trying to avoid them taking on a whole bunch of added costs with the short-term need of propane air. Uh, when we're waiting for the IESP over the next two years to be up and running. Just really quickly, not that we need to go into a super technical detail. Iqal, just to compare it to Iqal, Iqal's a very dry gas, so when the natural gas comes out of the ground. It almost goes straight into the community and is used within a, within the homes. We don't have that option with M eighteen because of the liquids, so this means that we have ethane, propane, uh butane. And then we've got C five plus, a condensate stream, and we actually have a lot of it, we, we make um. I won't use a technical term, but we do make a lot of liquids, like we'll be making. A truckload of liquids every three to four days in this type of an operation. So what we need to do is we actually bring the gas out of the ground, we knock out those free liquids. Uh, through a separation process, this is gonna be very much like a well servicing operation, so. When we did our well service in twenty twenty-four, this is a very similar type of equipment, so you bring the gas up out of the ground. You take surface equipment, you knock out the free liquids, we then have stabilized free liquids that are stored. On-site or off-site, and I'll talk about what we're gonna do with those liquids in a few minutes, but. We'll have those free liquids, and then we're actually gonna go through a mobile processing plant. So this is like a very scaled down version of the IESP, and that's what this image is trying to show. This is a picture of one of the facilities, not the exact one we're proposing, but. A very similar type facility that's being used in the US right now, and this is actually the company we're working with on this. And these are mobile gas processing plants. They're on wheels, they can be brought out to site and they can be set up in weeks, not years. And they can immediately start producing compressed natural gas, so this is our short-term solution. To get gas out of M eighteen uh and, and obviously get it into a trailer and bring it to Anuvik. I mentioned the two pads earlier, um, we wanna keep the energy pad. As our place where we're gonna have construction and development of the long-term project, so. Kind of up to the, the top left of this image, about two hundred meters away is where that large pad sits that I showed the main facility on. This is the well pad, so the M eighteen well is sitting right down here. So this is the M eighteen well, and then we would set up this surface equipment here. Such that it would be that mobile gas processing, so we would have. The pressure letdown equipment, we would have the gas processing equipment, and then we would have our truck loadout, both for the compressed natural gas. And the liquids, the compressed natural gas would go on trucks that would be hauling. Somewhere between one and three, depending on the season, but one to three truckloads of CNG would be going to Anuvik every day. And every couple of days, we would have a load of condensate coming out or, or liquids. Some of this condensate can stay locally and be used as. It can be used in some heaters and more industrial type heating applications, but we would never put it in a home. So we will keep some of the liquids locally, when we've done the well test previously and even the people before IPC. That did the well testing on this well, they did keep the liquids local and they were able to consume it, uh particularly in Tuck in their heaters. Uh, but we will have excess liquids, liquids and we will haul those south, we're not gonna keep the liquids in the north. We're gonna truck them out and we're gonna take them to the south and we'll take them to an accredited um. Oil processing or disposal facility for those, uh and then. The only other things that we have going on in sight is we will be using an incinerator, we've stayed to the commitment, we've always had. Where any gas hydrocarbons that we can't manage in the process, we will use, we will put them in an incinerator. Which is a more destructive way to manage those impurities, we've been able to do this with very little. Um, gas flow going to an incinerator, and the only other thing we would have on site is an emergency flare, so that's this equipment in the bottom. The emergency flare is not used on a regular basis, it's only in the event. We see an unforeseen or unsafe circum, or unsafe situation in the facility, where we then direct our flow to the flare stack. Couple more things on how this would operate, so right now. The team that's on the phone and people supporting us, we're very focused on getting the details around how we operate this. Uh, and the procedures, specifically the safety procedures around this. Uh, there's a bunch of engineering we have to do and hazard operability studies to make sure that we're not missing anything, and all of that is ongoing right now. We are trying to work within everything that we've had approved to date, so we have. We have the various operations authorizations with the CER. We have the local rules with the Anuvik Alawat Land Administration. Um, we have our emergency response, our wildlife management, our environmental protection. And our safety plan, so we're trying to work within the confines of all these approved plans that have been approved both locally. Uh, territorially and federally. And the only thing that we're doing is just putting together the specifics, so these plans are broad. They'll cover all aspects of construction and operations with the IESP, and now we're really focused on. Trying to get the details around this specific operation and the considerations we need to take to do that. This will be staffed twenty-four hours a day and we, we will have wildlife monitoring twenty-four hours a day as well. Um, this equipment will be a bit more hands-on than the IESP, but so it'll be staffed twenty-four hours a day for that reason. I mentioned before, small volumes of natural gas will be incinerated that we can't manage in the process. And then we've talked about the condensate uh going south, this kind of immediately. Brings on that local energy, it's also an immediate. And operations on IESP, so it's our way of speeding up gas production with the main project being a little bit behind schedule. Couple more slides and then I'll let you ask questions. We uh, this is the permitting process that IESP went through over four years, we. Are of the view that we don't need to do anything outside of this, as I mentioned, outside of this approval process, so we're taking this entire framework. And working within the map of it, so uh, these are all the various groups um that we've worked with along the way. Um, to get our approvals and we will be submitting to the Canada Energy Regulator in particular as the main. Um, regulator on this project, but we'll be working within our current authorizations, we're not proposing a new submission. It took us a year or a year plus to get each one of our approvals, we're not proposing to do no application. We've actually done a pre-application meeting with them already uh here in mid-August, so. I think we're in a good position where we can probably make this submission uh by the end of September. We'll also need to work with Transportation of Dangerous Goods and the Anuvik Alawat Land Administration. I've talked about most of this, so everything I talked about that we are working on will be submitted to the Canada Energy Regulator. And some various pieces of that will be submitted to the other regulators. Uh, expecting that all goes well and we're able to get. Uh, the kind of the technical and commercial figured out with Anuvik Gas, we would be looking to start this in the early part of twenty twenty-six. Uh, which is great because that's only four to five months from now. We are doing what I would consider, and this is one, this is actually our first meeting on this topic, but. We are kind of re-initiating with what we would consider very key stakeholders in this. And looking for letters of support uh such that when we go to the Canada Energy Regulator. Um, it can be validated that the local communities in, in support of this and we don't have to endure. Hopefully a one-year process of review and we can get something like this online in a much shorter timeframe. I'll stop there.
Pretty thanks Travis, great overview, questions from council? Deputy Mayor Barrett.
Thanks Travis for the update, it's been a while since I've heard stuff, it seems that things are moving along fairly right, fairly well. Just with respect to the mobile um compressed gas facility you're looking to bring, so that's gonna be built on essentially we'll call it the well pad. And all that equipment will be there effectively until the full processing plant is set up. Then you can, for lack of a better term, flip the switch and go over to the main system, and you guys will demo all that mobile equipment out?
That is correct, so we're. Quite focused on, we obviously wanna protect that sump cap, we wanna protect the well pad, uh we gotta protect the permafrost, so. The plan right now is that we would map that entire well pad, uh where the equipment's sitting. And then all of this equipment is off the ground, so we're given a, a barrier off of the well pad, and it's all on wheels. For the most part, it's on wheels, there's a few skid-based pieces of equipment, but it's all mobile, there's no fixed. Pieces going into the sump here or the well pad that's gonna fix this to the, to the location. While we commission and start up the main project, this can continue to operate. And any hiccups we have in the main operation, we will have this as a fallback to produce something. And then as soon as the main project is up and smoothly running, we can remove this exactly, and it'll be a clear space again. But I, I'm gonna be honest, like this, this will likely be here for at least two years. Until we're confident that the IESP is up and running.
Well, thanks for that, it's um definitely. I guess encouraging to see you guys are interested in take, looking at some novel approaches to help us deal with that. Potential crisis um situation if we ever got in a worst-case scenario with what we're facing with respect to Iqal, so. Again, thank you guys for having a look at this and seeing whether there's anything you can do to help alleviate. Some of the pressures that some of us are feeling about this stuff. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Right Travis and Tina, that was great, great update, certainly um, we can um. Will uh do up a request for council decision for Wednesday for a motion. If you can send Jenna uh some of the information that, you know, should be in the. Uh, support letter and who that should go to, um, just send that out to Jenna and then we'll. We can, at the regular council meeting on Wednesday, uh that'll come to the floor.
Fantastic.
Great.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council.
Okay, thanks Jenna.
Thank you, good night.
Okay, we'll keep moving on with um. With update and and Deputy Mayor Barrett says it uh, rate that they're helping Anuvik Gas with the. Bunch there in with the Iqal watering out because um. Built a lot of buildings, a lot of homes, recreation complexes that are still dependent on. Natural gas, so uh we need, need to keep it flowing. Item number five, public questioning here again. This is Hanson, you have a question, you have a comment? Feel free.
So I, I would like to discuss tonight or bring forward for your attention. Um, issues on tinted windows in vehicles. Um, to me, it seems like nobody, RCMP, and I don't know if bylaw can do anything. But the only people enforcing this is the people that give the driver's test because. Uh, you can't take a driver's test if there's tinted windows in a vehicle. And they adhere to that, so I would like to know why. Uh, if you can't, and I, I looked it up online, it is definitely against the law to have tinted windows. And I know when I drive around town, I can't see people in their vehicles because the windows are tinted. And so I would like to bring forward that I think it's a concern. If you can't take your driver's test in a vehicle that has tinted windows. Then why are vehicles allowed in town to drive around with tinted windows? Okay, that's my issue number one.
Let's just uh see if we know anything about that.
I'll get the enforcement to look into that.
Yes, we will have our, our protective service look into that. We'll also raise it with the Staff Sergeant, why not, when he's here Wednesday, because um. The, the RCMP of course enforced most of those type of uh laws, and so we'll, we'll ask that question, thanks. And number two.
And number two is quads and motorbikes. Um, it seems to be, in my opinion, a free-for-all all summer. Uh, no enforcement of any sort that I'm aware of. And I, you know, happen to have the, the catwalk uh champion in my family. Underage and uh wearing a helmet but still driving on roads. And I almost got in a pretty serious accident with a young. Uh, fellow on a motorbike the other day and um, and I watched a couple of them. Uh, three days ago, going three abreast up the hill here and, and. Nobody stops at stops signs, nobody adheres to other rules and. I know in the old days, uh bylaw used to, you know. Uh, take keys away and things like that, and parents had to come with their child to, and got one morning to come in and, and get your. Uh, motorized vehicle, whatever it was, but. People used to stay off the roads and they used to go in the trails and go on a road simply to get across to another trail or something. That is not the case now. It's constant and only on the roads, and I wanna know why there's no enforcement either by the bylaw. I never see them out in the evenings or anything when, when any of this action is. I know there's action after school and I don't see anybody driving around. Um, looking for anything like that and I don't see. Any RCMP enforcement either, I don't see vehicles driving around, I, I expect maybe they're short on staff, maybe they're. Doing something else, but I just don't see. Fear in any of these people driving, and they drive without helmets and, you know, you. We're gonna have a serious accident, someone's gonna lose their life. And I just feel that at least if somebody brings that forward publicly. That maybe something will be done about it.
No, great, great comment, and I think a lot of us have seen that, we're gonna ask the SAO now to. Explain what bylaw officers could do, because we have three bylaw officers, so. Cindy?
So despite no enforcement, there is enforcement efforts that happen, uh, one thing is they can't chase. One thing is they can't chase the kids because as soon as you start a pursuit of a kid, that tends to escalate. And then it's like, oh, the, you know, the, the man's running after them, so, so they don't try to do that. When they know who the parents are, they will go and speak to the parents, I have had. Um, the officers actually go to the parent's house and have that discussion. Or being able to trail a kid without chasing him per se, so there is some, not. All the time, obviously not twenty-four hours a day, they all. They also have an education program that they're uh they're going into the school this month. In fact, they were talking about that. But if you'd like some more information about that, I can certainly have the Director of Protective Services come and speak to that. Uh and the R C M P do, particularly around the schools, when the kids are starting around the schools, you'll see. Some of the patrols around the schools, which of course stops it around the school, but then it just pushes them onto the street. So I can have the director coming give a better report on Wednesday if he's available. It's a Wednesday, it's a training night, but uh if not, he can at least give a report back and we can explain a little bit more about what they do. Do.
Yeah, if he could take ten minutes at the beginning of the meeting, we can um squeeze him in same time as uh Staff Sergeant Wyatt. So that would be useful, because I mean, she would come back for Wednesday also. Deputy Mayor Barak?
Good question too, because I cannot recall. Do our bylaw officers have the power of seizure? Or equipment?
They do, and in the past we have, um but it is a slippery slope. So in terms of the enforcement, it depends on the circumstances and what they are doing, the reason why they are seizing. Like, for instance, can they take a kid's bike? Um that's a slippery slope that the the parents are uh want to uh enforce that, then it's a legal. You know, uh dilemma, but as I said, I can have the director give a better description of what it is that they are doing.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. It's just a matter of, again, what tools are available. Even when you're seizing things, you're impounding them, you have to keep them in secure storage and blah blah blah.
Yes, and that's that's part of it is then then we are then responsible for the bike and if something happens to the bike, then we are. Responsible.
Yep, no, it'd be good to just kind of understand what all the tools available are, because obviously you have some people who may listen when they're given a talking to. And others who may just ignore that and be repetitive offenders, so it's just interesting, it'd be interesting to know what kind of authorities.
Yeah, and particularly the parents and the responsibility and the insurance and the liability on the parents and. Uh the other family members as well, so the more that we're aware of who the killer, the kids are. The better we can approach the parents with. Um you know, in the past, we have. Found out who the who the kid is, we've gone to the school and actually called them to the principal's office to have the chat with him or. Um you know, he's been given a fine at work, yeah, so. There are ways that we can go about doing that, so I will uh bring it up to Director Larmen and he can do a report. Okay?
No, that'd be great. I think we're a small community, or you just have to ask a couple of kids on the street who went by in the motorbike. Everybody would know, you know, who who the kid was, so yeah, some work on that would be great. Are you anything else?
No, those were my my two, my two things that I wanted to bring forward that uh, yeah. And my other question then would be. If if I had have gotten in an accident with the young person on the motorbike. How does insurance kick into this? What happens? I mean, they're eleven years old.
And that again falls on the responsibility of the parents and the liability of the parents who either bought the bike for them or have the bike insured. So in the past, we have um gotten a a a. Sorry, a license, you know, you've seen some of the smaller licensed places, the A T B license.
Yeah, but but this is, this is a nothing. It's not insured, it's not anything. It's an eleven-year-old child. On the bike, and I mean, it was close, so close that. He was really scared and he started fishtailing all over the road. He didn't lose it. Um but he certainly didn't see me and came right out of a trail right in front of me, so. If I had hit that child. And damaged my my vehicle and of course damaged that bike and heaven forbid. You know, not a lot of damage to the child, who covers those costs? That that's my question. I I don't know if anybody can answer that, but that's my question. Is it my insurance?
That would, it would be no different than if another vehicle that didn't have insurance hit you.
So it would be my insurance then. That's exactly right. And so. Here we are in September, you know, this has been going on since May. Yes, you say you've got some, you know, control on it and been doing something. But I would suggest that that hasn't been enough and it hasn't been successful. That's what I'm saying, and you're putting the rest of the community at risk as well as those children's lives. Yeah, so. And and I don't like it. Thank you.
Good, thanks. Good points.
So I just know one thing, I just did. It's been a little while, but there have been instances of loss of life from people crashing in and around town. On both A T Vs and on snowmobiles and stuff, so it is a real concern and it has happened before. And it's only a matter of time before it happens again.
And and I don't want it to happen again. Yeah.
Great, thanks. All right, moving along. Item number six, the adoption of the minutes for the August eleventh, thirteenth council meeting. Any changes needed there? Right. Item number seven, action items seven one.
So other than N T P C, they're still going through the legal process. Um they haven't determined what the rates are gonna be yet. It's still a lot of back and forth between the Public Utilities Board and N T P C and NAC Energy. Uh and again, to note that the G N W T is also reviewing their. Utilities policy of which we asked our legal counsel to represent us and intervene on that as well, so we have a say in their policies. Uh land acquisition and future development uh is dependent on the C D L uh and the community plan. As well as the community plan that's coming up. Uh we target for November, as you're aware, we're going to delay it to allow a little bit more engagement for the community. And uh the final thing is the stop sign is now up on Shelby.
Questions, comments from council on any of the action items?
Can I make a comment on your land zoning bylaw thing? I went to read it and. Uh it, because I'm not involved in council. I was, I found it extremely difficult because nothing there showed me what any of the new. Um points were that were going in. Nothing was highlighted or or uh. So when I was reading it, it was like I was reading a brand-new document. And it was pretty thick and I got tired after, you know, so many pages, but it would be extremely helpful. From a public's point of view, uh what what the changes were by highlighting in areas or something, that's. Well, when I went to the library to read it, so uh just a comment.
No, good comment, and you're right. The the community plan and the zoning bylaw. Especially if you read through both of them, there's a lot of information there, so um. I would guess probably for this round, it's not possible, but that's certainly something to keep in mind as we. Because this is the beginning of several updates and and bylaws and stuff, but as we're communicating with the public to be able to identify. What what the changes are, what's new. Yeah, good point. Item number eight, new business. Eight one, request for donation, Western Arctic Business Development Corporation. Cindy, you want to give us an overview of this?
Uh yes, we actually did have.
She left. She said she was coming back Wednesday.
Oh, she'll come back on Wednesday. Okay, so this is an annual uh trade show, a regional trade show. That is presented um by WODDA uh in collaboration with I T I. So just based on uh their limited funding to facilitate this, they have requested a donation of the space. Uh they did the same last year and it was approved last year, uh so they are asking for it again. A couple of questions that we did have in terms of aligning with our policy was, are they nonprofit? Yes, they are. They identified that they were nonprofit. Um yes, they are collaborating with I T I on this. Uh I T I is providing catering.
Promotional items.
Yeah, so no money towards the spaces, what they're uh what they're contributing, they're contributing other um. Other parts of that. Uh one of the questions we asked is, if you don't get this donation, will the. Event run? And if they would not be able to afford to run this event for. For the community businesses and and the trade show. So that's uh that's basically what uh what questions, unless there was anything else you wanted us to to ask.
Oh, Deputy Mayor Barak?
Not a question, but I did note in the application, they're not charging a fee for registration for businesses to be part of the show. Nor are they charging admission fees. It's open to the public, so it's free for everyone to participate.
Yes.
So there's no, there's no money coming in to help offset the cost that would be anticipated, which is another thing to be important to note.
Other questions, comments from council? No. It's funny, it just shows that this is the green side, this is the black side. I don't know if that's. I don't know if that means anything. Don't be too dark on the side, okay?
Yeah, that extends right up to the audience.
All right, we'll keep moving here. Nine one, under bylaws. Nine one, the amend the business license bylaw.
And this is the third reading for this bylaw, uh just to incorporate the definition of mobile food vendors and have some. Regulation and control over um where they are going to be set up.
Because they're multi-related, nine two.
And that is, uh sorry, I'm just looking to nine two here. Uh again, same with the Highway Traffic Act and the amendments to this are to uh identify where they can and cannot. So we are adding that definition into the highway traffic file as well, and again, this is third break.
Questions, comments from council on nine one or nine two, which are on the mobile food vendors? No, for good. Nine three, amend the road name bylaw?
Yes, so on Wednesday, this is one of the ones uh before it goes to second, we've already had first reading for this. Before it goes to second reading, we need a public consultation, so on Wednesday night, we will be having a public hearing for this one. And then if there are no concerns, uh we will move forward with second and third reading of this one.
Questions, comments on the?
And to date, we have had, uh other than the uh people that live on. On Shelby saying, yes, we support it. We haven't had any uh negative comments about it, any any not in favor of it.
Nine four, bylaw manzoning to permit tiny home communities.
And again, this was first reading and on Wednesday, we will be having a public consult or a public hearing for this. Uh amendment to this bylaw as well, uh before we go to second and third. And to date, I believe that there has been no feedback provided uh through Jenna. Uh no one has provided that feedback unless there's somebody that might that has questions. Uh a couple of questions have come up that have been addressed. Uh one of the ones was a question about the environmental uh assessment done because. Of the previous, uh there was a garage on site before. And they confirmed that as part of their C M H C funding, they needed to do that as part of their funding, so that assessment was done. Uh there was another question about um. Uh drainage and uh there was a a culvert, but they've also addressed that in the design of their uh. In the design and the shaping of their land and that type of thing, so there's two questions have been addressed. Uh other than that, there was uh nothing in favor or nothing not in favor that was provided to Jenna. Once this is done, and this does go to second and third reading after the public hearing. On Wednesday night, uh in order to enable the rest of the tiny home village to to be uh built. There will also be four other requests for council decision that come after this. And that is in your briefing notes. One is to uh allow uh tiny homes as a conditional use. So this bylaw is to have the definitions in the bylaw. Uh the, once this is put into the bylaw, then we will have to have a conditional use because right now. The existing by, or the existing twenty fifteen bylaw says that it isn't, um it's not a permitted use, it's conditional use. So you will have to make a motion for conditional use to have the tiny homes there. You will also have to make a conditional use for manufactured homes. Because again, there's no definition, there was no definition in the two fifteen version. There's a variance request for rear and side setbacks and then a variance request to have the parking lot. Across the road um on the G N W T, like the Happy Valley land. And they do have a permit already issued by the G N W T to allow that to happen. So it's a little complicated because uh you know, we're trying to fit everything in, but we need this bylaw to be passed first and then those conditional uses will follow. On Wednesday night, this month.
Yeah, just. One clarification, the parking is just outside of the Happy Valley campground. It's not part of the actual camp, fenced-in campground. There's a small area that needs to be filled. It's not filled yet, small area that would need to be filled there for parking. And they have a five-year lease with I V I. Oh, question, uh council deals?
So with that parking lot being across, like what do you think we would have to do for? Like walking a child across the road to the daycare? Because the visibility of coming over that hill is, it's not great, right? Um so, and and it's fast, it's the, like, it's one of our faster roads. I mean, it would, it's one of our faster roads. We know because we put a a speed catch thing or they're saying, hey, you're going too fast. So clearly, that's a fast road already, so just making sure that we take into consideration what we might need to do. If people are crossing the road with children. And then my second point, I'll just quickly, that, and then the second one is. Um when you said that they had the land surveyed and they told us that they did. Because it was part of C M H C or they had the, because there was a shop there, do we get that? Like, just because I could easily say, yeah, I did that. So does that?
Do you want proof of the?
Well, we should. I mean, I think it it should be part of, part of the development permit if. If we're concerned that there's soil issues and we want to make sure that it was rectified, it should be part of the development.
Okay, I can ask that. Um uh back to the daycare though, what what we can suggest to them is they can have a drop-off zone. Um rather than, you know, parents parking, they can, you know, have 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 a designated spot on the tiny home village side. Where you can drop off your kid and pick them up and stuff like that, so yeah, we'll we'll also pose that to them about some of this and something to think about. Thank you.
And they do have two parking stalls on the onsite, so but in front of the actual building. There could be a drop-off spot, no, no parking but drop-off. Any questions, comments, counselors? Deputy Mayor Barak?
Sorry, just since we're gonna get into these other four bylaws and looking at setback variances and stuff. I know a while ago, when this was sort of brought up at the beginning of our term. We had a presentation, there were concerns among administration about things such as access for fire services and things like that. Have a lot of those issues been addressed through redesign? Because I'm I'm not fully up to speed.
Yeah, so they uh they did share the design with the um with uh Director Larmen. And reviewing as well as our responses to that situation. So we wouldn't actually be bringing a truck in, we'd obviously be calling holes into that unit because we would want to bring a truck in and limit it that way. But we still have access to the fire hydrants that we need uh with the trucks on the road. Uh as well as their notification of, like, for instance, the way that they described the building, if an alarm is going off in in one of the tiny homes. There's gonna be a big red light uh at the front, like a beacon, to say which home it is, so easily accessed that way. Um and then their design, uh you know, we had talked about the fire code and meeting the fire code and the way that the homes were built. Were to the fire code, like were to the National Building Code actually, not the fire code because that's a. Uh but the National Building Code, which incorporates all of those uh fire protection distances and that type of thing, so.
All right, just to follow, counselor, um so as far. From administration's perspective, who have some of the people with expertise in civil engineering and such, which some of us don't have. Most of the concerns they've brought up in the past seem to have now been addressed as far as with the redesign. In conjunction with some of the comments you've done, and then just out of curiosity, because I haven't seen a new. Design plans since that one came in like a year ago. How many parking stalls are they gonna have across? Design plans since that one came in like a, a year ago, how many parking stalls are they gonna have across the road? Five, four? Pretty small area.
Twenty.
I know, but I was gone. On holidays, I didn't look at anything.
Yeah, there, there's a lot over there, but twenty or more.
Twenty parking spots?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I just drove by there early and I was trying to picture in my mind.
Well.
They haven't built.
Requires a fair amount of.
So is it going over towards?
Just, just below Happy Valley, like, Happy Valley is here and the parking is right here. And then.
Like, kind of where Alice's owns has that little clearing, like, is something like that, like?
Yeah, but anyway, on, on the diagram, they show there are about twenty parking stalls and it's a lot of built.
And I believe two on the uh. Would you like, uh, somebody from the NITA to come again on Wednesday to?
If it's in the last package, I can go through my emails because I can, I didn't look at anything while I was on. So I'll, I'll, I'll dig it up and look at it.
Councilor Merrill?
I think Councilor Gillis has some really valid concerns about Franklin Road there. And we make sure there's a pedestrian crossing sign going both ways, that Frank was looking to slow down in that area.
Hmm.
Right now, there's nothing to be again, that people in the process.
Right.
Good. Anything further on any of the bylaws? Any further information items?
Nothing, not that I, it's.
Okay, oh, Deputy Mayor Barak?
Sorry, maybe I can provide it. Uh, at a later date. For the fellow counselors who are here. Just so folks are aware, the landfill fence is basically mostly put up. There was a little bit of issue with some bears damaging the fence because it was kind of just tacked along the top, it wasn't fully installed. Um, we worked with the contractor and made some recommendations to open up a few areas to allow bears to flow a bit more freely. Because they're just gonna continue to damage the fence since they're all still around. Um, but just so people are aware that the fence is mostly up now and later in the season, it's gonna come in and. Finish the job off and put in all the electric wiring, so. If you haven't been to the landfill lately, it's, you'll come across a large fence around the whole thing now, with some openings at the moment.
And so the plan is still, I mean, we have the one committee meeting here or group meeting here, focus group meeting, and the plan is to. Continue with that next spring and, and bring everyone up to speed and work with all the different. Moving parts and organizations.
That can happen if people feel it needs to, it's really just kind of been on an ad hoc basis.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that's been one for a while, but I think. I'll be doing some updates with some of our co-management partners in my course of work in the next few weeks. And I put together a little presentation just to kind of update them because we've set up some cameras to do monitoring of bear activity before the fence went up. And now that the fence is up, we'll be adjusting that to try to monitor how the bears are interacting with it once it's fully installed. Um. So, yeah, we have a lot of pictures and stuff and uh.
Schedule a meeting?
We can deal with that outside, so I just want, just for the councils that are here, just because I know. I was just there the other day talking with the contractor and stuff, but if people haven't been there, still, the, the fence is pretty much up, just with the final stages. Which will happen towards the end of October and into November.
And then it gets electrified.
It'll be electrified when they come back at the end of October.
Right.
And it'll be, I would, a week or two, it'll be done.
Yeah, okay. Questions, comments, call for Merrill?
So I've seen some pictures of grizzly bears just walked over the fence. So when the electricity is running through it, like, how much is it, so if I went and touched it, I'm not gonna wanna climb over it, so that idea, I'm. I'm smarter than a bear, I hope, but I have trouble imagining a giant grizzly not going through that.
So the area that got knocked down, like I said, they had just gone up and sort of hung the. Fence just by the top and they just kind of put some wiring just to kind of put it in place. And uh, one of the mornings, one of the people went in. A little too quickly, I think, and spooked the bears and the first thing they do when they spook is they're gonna run headlong into trying to get away. So a bear just ran headlong into it, knocked it down, because it only had a couple of wires holding up, so it wasn't fully installed. When the fence is fully installed, um, speaking from experience, it's a very shocking experience to touch a bear fence, it's live. Um, it's not gonna kill you, but it'll definitely make your heart pound quite a lot and. Hopefully you don't grab right on the wire because it makes your muscles contract and then you have a really hard time letting it go afterwards. But uh, it, it'll, we have some video at E C C. From our colleagues in Norman Wells who also have put an electric fence there and how the bears are interacting with there and they definitely. Do not like getting zapped. Whether it will deter a very, very determined bear is yet to be seen, but usually. A couple encounters with the fence that's electrified will usually discourage them. From continuing to try, the big males sometimes take a few more tries to discourage them. They're stubborn.
Councilor Gillis?
So that, does that mean they're gonna be turned off in the winter time?
Well, largely operation, yeah, the fence will not need to operate when bears are hibernating, because there are no bears to keep them.
Oh.
So it'll essentially operate from.
Sounds like a silly question, but I don't want my kid near it, so, and he's curious.
If, following up on Ms. Hanson's concerns, if there are people you know who have kids that go quadding, there are definitely kids. Quadding around that perimeter road, uh, because they show up on our cameras. Um, and you may want to talk to them, encourage them to stay away from that, but it will largely operate generally from May to October.
Okay.
And by November, most of the bears have moved off, getting ready to sleep. So by mid-November, it shouldn't be operational until start of May.
But you wouldn't.
And it's on a solar system, but it's also apparently gonna be hooked into the grid as a backup, if the solar power is not enough, it'll hook into the power grid. As a backup.
But you'd have to run into the fence to actually hit the electrical part. That's, that's hung on the outside.
I dare you to touch that fence.
So someone will not get shocked.
What my kid's gonna say, I'll dare you.
Someone will not get shocked unless they touch the wire string up and then they touch the chain link behind it, which is gonna be, you know, eighteen inches behind. You have to touch both to get shocked.
Okay.
Or if you're grounded really well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But generally speaking, a bear may say poke its head through the wires, but as soon as its nose touches the fence, it's gonna get hit right then.
Okay.
So that's gonna be, it's not as soon as you touch the wire, it, there's two connection points that have to be made.
Made October.
Councilor Merrill?
So then what is the plan, so we electrify the dump, the bears don't like it, are they gonna come visit us in town or was that? The hope that they realize they should no longer be dump bears and adopt a new life?
So, putting on the dual hats here, so typically, when things are done correctly. Which the town of Anubik has done a lot of things in advance correctly, such as installing bear-proof bins through ninety-five percent of the town. Um. The, the short answer is you never quite know what you're gonna get, in the experience of a lot of other communities that have done this, some communities have had. Some bears come into the community, some people have had none show up, even though they're expecting them. Um, typically, if we do get bears coming into the community, it's only for a season, maybe two. As long as they don't get food reward when they come in. And the bear-proof bins are the biggest thing that's gonna, and also helping the public understand their role. In ensuring their trash is properly disposed of in those bins. And that they minimize any potential attractants that may be on their properties and the folks that are on the periphery of town, say along Wolverine. Which in Tuma, the hotspots where bears are just coming out of the bush. Um, they're the ones who may have to be the most vigilant, but generally bears do not like. Humans and they do not like conflict and they do not like risk. So they will not put themselves into a risky situation unless they are desperate. Um, most of the time within two seasons, their problems if the fence is working well and the detractants are managed well. The bears will largely just go back to being wild bears. Because a lot of bears, even though people think they spend their entire time in the dump. We do have a little bit of caller data from another project where bears that were collared elsewhere came into the dump, but then they left. And they came back for a bit and then they left, so not all bears stay out there all year round. So they do move in and out of the area. Um, but generally speaking, there's a lot of things that have been done right in, in preparation for something like this to happen, so. The hope is that there won't be much problem as long as the attractors are managed, especially in the first few months.
Okay, thanks Steve.
And I think we're a hundred percent little bit now, aren't we, Cindy?
Yes.
A hundred percent?
A hundred percent.
Yeah, there's no more garbage bag pickup out of plywood boxes or garbage cans, so I think we're a hundred percent.
Yeah, and the communities that typically have experienced the most problems from. Electrifying fences, still have roadside pickup in plywood boxes and bears can get in there without any problem. And then they continue to keep coming back because they have that food reward, so that's the thing that will keep them coming. If they don't get a reward, they lose interest very quickly.
Well, it's good, thanks Steve.
Okay, any other information items? Thing then? Uh, item number twelve, council concerns. I know we've addressed a few of the concerns, Deputy Mayor Barak?
Thank you, that's something that's kind of been brought up a bit before, but I think it's well, it's been brought to my attention by some other folks again. And it kind of follows in line with Ms. Hanson's concerns, uh, but I go with golf carts. Um, there is a. Very increased presence of golf cart traffic in and around the community, including down some of the main roads and. Including some children who are too young to even have a learner's license, who are driving these things around, so. I guess there's been some concerns expressed and I've had some myself about some of this very heavy traffic. And, you know, there could even be situations where folks who are out golfing, enjoying a few soda pops and then come back into town afterwards. Uh, is also some potential risk associated with that, so. Um, I think it's something we need to just think about a bit or figure out how I wanna address.
To Director Warman as well and uh. He can meet with the R C P about that and not only with the golf carts, but the whole enforcement thing. Um, and talk about some of the additional traffic enforcement that can be had.
Yes, not that I'm totally against the whole notion of them, but um, when they start driving down McKenzie Road into the downtown core, think of the guy. I actually saw one just today, driving down Airport Road outside of town. Um, coming towards the golf course, I don't know where it came from, but, yeah, it seems to be. Like a lot of the other things, a really growing thing. Or more and more people are getting them, more and more people doing it, they're letting their small children drive them around as well. I know they're not really high-speed and stuff, but same thing, no helmets, no licenses, too young to even have a driver's permit, these things are, they're not street legal. They don't have turn signals and such, so it becomes a potential risk. Especially again, you have kids that don't understand traffic rules and they're blowing through stop signs and stuff and all. So I would just like to highlight it again, because it was something that was brought to my attention a few days ago as well. By the residents.
Good point, thanks, any further council concerns?
We're gonna take all the kids off the road, where do we put them?
What?
The kids are whoever's on these motorbikes and that, maybe we developed a trail thing last year.
Part of the challenge on some of the trails, as well as when people are walking and the kids are almost running them over as well. Um, which can be a challenge, but the town has no financial capacity to make a. Trail, trail liability of, outside of the town.
Deputy Mayor Barak?
Uh, and Councilor Day, I would just say, it's not necessarily a case of wanting to take all the kids off the road, it's wanting to have appropriate. Following of traffic rules and safety measures, um, and laws, so. Again, too much of a good thing can become a bad thing, I think that's kind of where we're getting to, where there's too many things that are being done, there's too much high-risk behavior. And too many laws being broken essentially, so it's not necessarily in my mind of taking all the kids off the road. It's encouraging them to follow the rules of the road and drive safely and responsibly when they're allowed.
And, and encouraging parents not to be allowing kids that are six or seven or eight. Doing the things that kids who are sixteen would be doing, I mean, that's, it's the same with snow machines, I mean, we allow snow machines to be driven throughout town. Um, but safely and not, you know, three young kids on a machine going way too fast with no helmets, so.
With no headlights.
It's that balance, I think, just creating that balance. Councilor Gillis?
Is there a license, I think I heard something about a town license that they can get to drive these legally on the streets, uh?
The town, so when a young person, um. And again, this comes back to the parents who buy the vehicles to get the kids to take the course. There is an A T V, Snow Machine Safety Course that the child should be taking. And then they write a written test and then they get their license, um, is it enforceable? By the Highway Traffic Act, no, it's not, but it is our efforts to try to teach the kids road safety in the rules of the road. And I, uh, I think it's sixteen, yeah. And then they also, uh, uh, people should be getting a A T V permit. And, and that type of thing, but again, it's enforcing it because we don't know. Everybody who has an A T V aside from stopping the, the safe marriage permit. So it's some education for the owners and the parents who are buying these machines, remember. That there is the opportunity for the kids to be educated on the proper rules of the road. Uh, as well as be permitted, so that way we're confirming that they are caught.
So sixteen, they have a driver's license?
Yeah, I think it's, uh, wait a minute, A T V, so the A T V Act, if I'm not mistaken, is. Fourteen? I think the A T V Act is fourteen, but six, there is a, there's a, a caveat, but. You can't be on a, like a public, like a highway until you're sixteen or something like that, unless you're under supervision of a licensed driver.
Oh, we just.
Sorry, I have to, I have to go back three years, I haven't looked at my A T V Act in a while, so.
Let's just bring that information from Wednesday and make sure there's no confusion. And the town doesn't issue A T V license plates anymore, that's just done by infrastructure. We went, what, a year ago?
Yeah.
So we went to get some more plates because we were out and they said, well, you don't have the authority to issue those, that's our, that's our job, so we go, fine, your job. Yeah. Okay, no further council concerns? If we will be going in cameras, we'll just need a motion to go in camera, should be briefly, we'll take a five-minute break. People can bring, move by Councilor Merrill, second by Deputy Mayor.